With that being said, it is seven oh five and we will open this evening's meeting on the Town of Southwick Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. We are holding this meeting in person at the Southwick Town Hall at four fifty-four College Highway as well as on Zoom. We are recording the meeting and you can as well just need to let us know. Hearing none. Mr. Goddard, the Town Planner's report.
Before I dive in, uh, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if you're looking to say something, Dick, or not. Okay, I'll dive in. Let's see. Since the last meeting, uh, I participated in discussion with, uh, students from UMass, a representative from Franklin Land, Land Trust, excuse me, uh, Patty Gamberry from BBPC and Randy Brown, um, about municipal water sources uses within, um, watersheds that feed them. Uh, you know, talking about what we call risks that we see here in Southwick, um, steps that have been taken to protect um, that water resource and so on and so forth. This is a project, um, that through with participants' participation and collaboration, um, although guided through PBPC, they're talking with, um, a wide range of communities in Western Massachusetts, a two-year project. Um, so the discussion for Southwick really focused around where our wells are today, uh, where we are contemplating any future, uh, well, um, where wells exist, uh, that are managed outside of Southwick. There'll be our West Springfield Wells. Um, and the uses that are allowed and we, uh, and for us, it's what's a wellhead protection district, right? Um, yeah, so I'll just share that the other concerns I, um, um, shared have to do with the, uh, continued commercial slash restricted industrial use, um, that takes takes place over that aquifer and the anticipated expansion. Uh, you know, it's something that, um, isn't, um, called a problem today. Right? Uh, West Springfield has good water quality out of their wells. Southwick has good quality out of theirs. Ours is technically upstream, being located further south in the Great Port Corridor. Um, so anyways, in a nutshell, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we talked about some of the uses, some of the good steps that Southwick has taken to protect uh, including, um, our existing bylaw, um, and where that may lead us in the future. Um, I will make reference to the fact that, uh, I think one of the contemplated uh, future well locations is within the North Pond Conservation Area. Um, no need, uh, for it as of today, we have our withdrawal permit. Um, that it's not a limitation based upon how much we can pump under the grounds, how much DEP says this much, no further. I was going to tell you the discussion that took place, uh, that participated in. Uh, I have been coordinating with Attorney Beglin on a number of topics, uh, but including uh, Revere Road. Uh, I don't know if this will rise to any particular level of, um, participation from the planning board, but, uh, depending upon when documents, uh, are finalized and submitted to him, it's going to dictate whether or not the the taking of a wedge of land between two subdivisions that was discovered five or so years back, uh, will be managed at this town meeting, uh, future town meeting. And lastly, I'll shoot, oh, good points. Um, the state has returned their comments for the noble steam conservation restriction, as any good reviewer would do. Uh, although I took an approved document from them from, you know, a few years back and gave it back to them, please add that, right? They give us a ton of comments, ton of refinements. Uh, that's fine. Just different people looking at the same document. Uh, I will be working to turn them back around them. Um, go through attorney Beglin, make sure he's comfortable with the changes that, uh, were suggested. Get it back to the state, have them get their final announcement, we can circulate it for, uh, signatures. And lastly, last night, uh, notice of intent hearing was opened for the San West Hudson Drive connector. Um, so DPW through Massworth Grant has been advancing design drawings, um, that include bring sewer service down Hudson Drive. I should say sewer and water, um, stormwater improvements. In order to, uh, create a connection between the terminus of Hudson, uh, Drive as exists right now on the Tilcon Land north of Slabbrook, essentially going darn near due west from that point to pick up that San West Road. Um, this is a project that is years off. Um, despite the fact that the most ten year was open, I think we need to get someplace with that first. But a component of that project is that DEP can, whether it's filed as a limited project, which has some bearing upon how the project is designed and essentially making sure it's designed in conformities to planning board standards. Um, of course, this was the, we'll call it the playbook that the consultant worked with, uh, but I bring it up here only to probably raise awareness to the status of the project, but also, uh, there may be a letter that I may ask our illustrious chair to, uh, sign that just makes some reference to, okay, that looks like that conforms to um, subdivision standards. Thanks. So that's it for a non-ordered report.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody in the audience have a comment on something that is not already listed on the agenda? Very none. Seven ten P M. The new public hearing for proposed bylaw amendment, chapter one eighty-five, section thirty-seven, site plan review.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll let you do the honors if you so desire.
Reading the notice of public hearing for today, Tuesday, April eighth, seven ten P M. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five at seven ten P M. Via Zoom and at the Southwick Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass. To consider amending the code of the Town of Southwick, Chapter one eighty-five zoning, Section thirty-seven, site plan review, including but not limited to distinguishing between non-residential accessory buildings and accessory dwelling units, defining the applicable review processes and other matters related thereto. Zoom meeting information is listed. Details regarding the matter may be reviewed by contacting the intern town planner, John Goddard, at his email or phone. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Jessica Thornton, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board.
Thank you very much. Uh, if you'd like, um, I'll begin. I'll talk more. That's what everybody wants. Okay, um, I've mentioned it at, uh, previous planning board meetings, but I'll share it again that for the purposes hearing that a, uh, a conflict was discovered between our contemplated accessory dwelling unit, uh, by law and the site plan review section of our zoning bylaw to which those projects, those byright projects are supposed to be directed. Um, let's just bring up that bylaw section right now. Uh, you know, there are two points that I'd like to make. Okay. Mr. Houtsinger, how's that Zoom level? Can you read that? Okay?
Yeah, I can read pretty good, John. Thank you.
Okay, so the conflict that was discovered is right here, uh, in section or subsection A. No building permit shall be issued for any new structure except single-family residence and accessory buildings, enclosed your buildings, et cetera, uh, without first admitting a plan of the proposed work to the planning board for site plan review. So the issue I took was that, uh, it exempts single-family residences and accessory buildings from site plan review. And in this case, since we are calling them accessory dwelling units, uh, I didn't want to leave that gap available, uh, to undo, uh, the work we're doing, the ADU bylaw. Uh, so my suggested change is to simply say non-residential accessory buildings. Therefore, a special building that is intended to be a residence is not exempt from site plan review.
And that will cover the garage portion, right? We've just put it there. Any non-residential accessory building. Da, 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 right?
Yes, um, but let's, let's explore that for a quick question, for a quick moment. Accessory dwelling units that are proposed to be within, um, existing structure are still subject, at least by the ADU draft bylaw, to site plan review. Except single-family residence and accessory. For any new structure, I'm going to first. So I guess what I'm thinking is that perhaps we need to add a sentence. We could. Sorry, says I'm.
It's not big enough for me across the room. Sorry.
The good news. I didn't give you page two. Things you wished on upon you, uh, a couple hours ago would be handy, but nonetheless, um, perhaps.
I think that I think that covers it. I just wanted to make sure. Do you agree if you read that? Yeah. Do you have that proposal in the digital sharing on the screen?
Yes, I'm sorry to do that, too. Mr. Houtsinger, one moment.
You who?
On the bottom here, Dick is where I do pose, uh, to define the accessory buildings that are not exempt from cycling view as non-residential accessory buildings.
Right, right. That's what you said before, right?
Yep. So the question I had, uh, that just came to my mind is I don't want to then uh, leave it open for an accessory dwelling unit that's proposed within an existing home, for example, you know, because people can be, uh, creating these within, um, you know, upper stories or, um, basements with adequate egress. Um, so I, although we'll say in our bylaw, they have to go through this process, perhaps we have to echo that in this.
Adding additional sentence that says.
Accessory, all accessory.
Dwelling units. Whether a new structure built within an existing structure will be subject to site plan review.
I think that's, that's what would, I feel comfortable closing that loop.
Okay.
Great. That was a long way to get through point number one, just to get to point number two, but I'd like to type that in.
Oh, yeah, let's do it.
If this will behave with me. There with me. Sometimes just got to work around it. Whatever I wants to go with maybe. We'll get there. Okay, we're back live. Madam Chair, do you want to take another stab at that?
I said something early in a minute ago. Now you want me to remember.
Yeah, I've been.
Any accessory dwelling unit whether within an existing or created by new is subject to site plan review. As outlined in chapter, you do that section.
Did I pick up the language comfortably? Is there something you need to refine?
Or new. Yeah, just cut it out of there and put it in the new proposed.
And I'm sorry, or the whole. This is why I surround myself with talent. Only it turned on right.
We're here.
Yes. Okay. That was point, uh, number one. Point number two, I bring up, I think in a strictly administrative sense in that for our upcoming, uh, discussion about the accessory dwelling in a bylaw, I did receive Tom, a few very minor comments back from the Attorney General's office, um, or attorney early, uh, raised, uh, the point that where we define the very narrow scope of site plan review for those accessory dwelling units, wanted to make sure that it wasn't, uh, conflicting with anything remaining in our site plan review section.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
So, uh, let me bring that up on the screen. We'll walk through it because we wouldn't, uh, you'll, I think we'll all see quickly at the remaining sections right, was that?
There may be a conflict.
No, 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 uh, no. In this case, I think it, it goes down to process.
Okay.
Um, and uses broad language that should leave the door open for appropriate review. I can't apparently talk and share at the same time. Okay. Yeah. All right, um, so section B talks about, um, how the plan is to be composed. Based upon what district you're in, we look for different standards, um, and but they do say rest of those zones, excuse me, R fourteen, R twenty and AC plan requirements are the same as our BR zone site plan requirements. So we'll have enough, we'll have adequate detail on there to indicate the utilities, um, the surrounding conditions um, for adjacent land uses, uh, and adequate parking and circulation out there as well as setbacks, right? Uh, I think those are going to be some of the primary considerations we're looking for. Um, section, subsection C says, if the planning board finds that the used structures and setting improvements are in conformity with the zoning bylaws, site plan will receive the recommendation of the planning board. I think that's sufficiently broad. Sections D and E talk about, uh, I suppose corrective, uh, actions, um, that may be undertaken by the planning board. Um, and then section E talks about turning it, uh, back to uh, back over to the applicant. Uh, the only concern I have, I suppose, with sections D and E is that it um, expresses a very truncated process and puts the burden of revisions upon the planning board to doctor it up. So I do think, uh, it's appropriate to walk a little bit of that back. Um, if you see fit and, um, the remainder of any process concerns that we have, I would encourage us to let that be part of the zoning bylaw, uh, rewrite and composition that PDPC will be undertaking. So.
So you do not see a need to edit B, C, D, or E because we may or may not be editing it further soon, or is there an edit or two that you feel wouldn't be getting too into the weeds of regular site and review?
There with me. We're just going to bring it all together so we can. Wish that I wasn't doing this on the online version of work. That's okay. So here's a I'm going to stop, stop it, stop it. All right, so if I were to, um, make a change, I'd like to put this burden here back onto an applicant. Um, and it has been our experience that that's what we've done. Uh, we think back to the daycare facility, um, done it was at Vining Hill Road and College Highway. That was certainly, uh, uh, back and forth process, but I don't think that it would be appropriate for anything but a minor revision to be put into place by the planning board. We're looking for the applicants to bring their proposals forward.
Okay. So in this case, the applicant should modify the plan according to the planning board or.
I think we said the applicant should modify the plan accordingly. But I want them to come back. I want them to return, um. That's a little bit broad right there.
Okay.
Except seeing, I don't want to, uh, be too specific. Um, then only E talks about, um, how an applicant would retrieve their plan. Again, this hasn't been the practical experience, um, of the planning board. And maybe I'm going too far into, you know, trying to modify a tool that was supposed to be simple, uh, for these byright uses. But I, it does seem to indicate that they're picking up at the next, um, regularly scheduled meeting. I think we just, um, add the, the term perhaps once approved by the planning board.
The site plan maybe picked up. Okay. Well, they don't pick it up at the next.
Our approval, uh, is stamping and, and signing, um, a site plan for site plan review. So I think they can just, uh, they can.
Maybe picked up by the applicant. So is that the end submitted? Or submit it.
And submitted, um, I can say submit it. It's better.
Okay. I think that those edits can be explained at town meeting as simply amending the language to reflect the process in which it actually, it actually practically occurs, which is to say that they amend the application, the, the site plans themselves, and once we approve, they go through the process of submitting it. Okay.
Let's hear it.
Dramatically.
The subject of that first sentence is the plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, of, uh, in section E there.
Oh.
So the plan is not submitting itself.
Yeah.
Not should be submitted, or, or the applicant shall submit it or something. You have to.
Yes, it's good to me. Dick, does that all track for you?
That seemed pretty good for me. I saw it.
All right. You understand what we're doing and are okay with it?
Yep.
All right. Is there anything else regarding this?
I didn't even want to put my hands that far into.
Are there any questions by members of the public? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan review bylaw amendment.
Dave's been a so moved.
Take a second or second.
We'll call a vote. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Take a singer, aye.
Diane, just a aye. Do I hear a motion to submit the proposed bylaw, the proposed bylaw amendment changes to town meeting?
Dave's been a so moved.
Take a second or second.
We'll call vote. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Take a singer, aye.
Diane, just a aye.
Thank you very much. I will follow up, um, with, uh, final review, uh, by attorney Beglin as is habitual, um, and I will type up a cover letter explaining the, uh, intent and recommendation of the board.
Some agenda, different but related. Or no, not yet. Okay. All right, we have the continued public hearing for the earth excavation wellhead protection district special permit modification for the land off of Hudson Drive and Shaker Road.
We continued this, uh, from our last meeting at, uh, the request of the advocate, uh, and their representative. Uh, that request was actually for some protracted period of time to the future, um, but to allow for any changes in the making of the board, if you bump to one meeting, uh, one or two meetings, uh, is what I would refer to as management for adjustment.
Yeah.
Maybe. I don't know. Maybe. So if, uh, you want to set discontinuance, I was going, oops, try to get. That's done. Why don't we go for seven ten? I will move that around as you do.
Okay. All right. So then do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to the April twenty-ninth meeting at seven ten P M?
Dave's been a so moved.
Take a second or second.
We'll call vote. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Take a singer, aye.
Diane, just a aye.
Okay, move right.
Now I'm somewhat related, but entirely different. Continued public hearing for the proposed accessory dwelling unit by law.
It gave me just a moment to bring up this document. This document. Madam Chairwoman, shall I?
Yes.
Okay, so we left off at the last meeting after having imported and homogenized a lot of language from the newly released model zoning. Bylaw that the state shared with us. I didn't share this one yet. I took that document. Along with attorney big lanes suggesting modifications and. Sent it to. Attorney Margaret Hurley at the state. Attorney General's Office for. If I can see the comments. Hope we can see, oh delightful. Okay, so I don't want to race through this. Yes. How's that?
Much better.
Okay. Attorney Hurley's comments were brief. And I will roll down to them slowly if you'd like. We can take a one last walk through the by law. If you'd like, I said one last, maybe I'm optimistic here.
I would entertain, let's, let's look at what she thought we needed to potentially change first.
Absolutely. Okay, let's look at those comments. Okay. The first ties in with what we just reviewed under site plan review. Essentially, she wanted to make sure that the criteria we talk about for approval. Minimizing rate changes and tree vegetation slow removal, making sure we have compatible architectural style with existing principal dwelling. Making sure there's adequate water supply in either sanctuary sewer or second service. In adequate parking. Maximizing convenience, safe for vehicular and pedestrian movement within the property and in relation to adjacent ways. We can request those regional trend modifications. And may impose reasonable conditions. They're not inconsistent with the by law. Proportions of state law. I don't think anything what I said right there conflicts with what we just read under site plan review and perhaps even better aligns with it with those new modifications that they're so politely suggested this evening. So I think she was just taking the opportunity to say, okay, you've narrowed down rather this describes a very narrow scope. Make sure that narrow scope doesn't conflict with your site plan review section.
We did it.
Yes, I thought there is the rest. So I think we're clean on that.
Yep.
Alright, I have a little bit, you'll see us a draft or vision in red that I have put in as a suggested response. But we're going to. Take a look at this. Previously, we said at least one part off street parking space must be provided for all local A D U's and protected use A D U's. Attorney Hurley was concerned, that's just saying at least. Made it sound like we could require more than one. With. I don't careful reading out that sentence, so. And as she notes, she'd been flagging that text as you've seen it from other communities. Bear with me. She had a second comment which dropped off with my edit here, so I just paste it in. She, so we talk about that required space. We know that Southwick does not have. Public transit service. The model by law says. They have a public transit service section. If you don't have it, snip it out. So that's what we did. We don't define what those points are in the definitions, nor do we describe. If bus service were to come to town and be within a half mile of an A D U, you don't need to have that. Parking space. So rather than go in and try and make this bulletproof from the, from the get go. At least with the suggested by law and attorney Hurley, just say, make sure you take a look at this. I think we're safe. Not talking about that exemption opportunity until bus service or some other public transit comes to town. I'll go back to the change in a moment and last phrase here. She says protective use idiots are allowed by right in any district whether single family home is allowed by right or by special permit. As we all kind of dove in and wrapped our heads around that. You know, that narrow point to a meeting or two ago. And so our existing language where we're talking about the local A D U circumstance. Which should be, which does not address the by right. A D U. Circumstance. So this is just as this has come together. In this draft, a local A D U is just that second special permit only. Option. So to perhaps clarify the language, I say that a local A D U may be allowed by a special permit. Under N G L forty A section six at any location within the town. Where a lawful preexisting nonconforming primary residential use exists in the zoning district in which said use lies does not allow. Single family residential use as a right or by special permit. The reason why I. Pause here is because I. Would prefer still to grind this up a little more with attorney begging. Chapter forty eight, section six. Special permit is essentially, I think we're more familiar with it, our nonconforming uses. Lots and structures by law where we're looking for finding that. The proposed use, in this case, a locally to a second one. Is that detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, right? Set that finding. Even though attorney Bigland refers to it as a special permit. I can't get my head past that, but that's okay. I. But my read of this, it says local A D U's, but that second you may be allowed. We use the or so just look at the second circumstance here. By that forty eight, section six finding at any location in town. Where there is a lawful preexisting nonconforming primary residential use. You may recall that chapter forty eight, section six addition was suggested by attorney Beglan. And I'm just not comfortable with that suggestion as it sits. I think. Perhaps inadvertently, or perhaps due to the unfortunate term of a local A D U, which doesn't impart any message that it's a special permit circumstance only, a planning board special permit, one eighty five, section nine, right, special permit. Where we want, where the planning board wants to have that that control over. That additional unit.
Not necessarily the narrow scope of chapter forty eight, section six.
That's right. I think that's the saying that, well, under option. A Roman numeral one, you can do the special apartment site kind of rule, which I think is the intent of the planning board for a second A D U. Alright, to bring in some of that discretion and ability to better protect the neighborhood. I think that Roman numeral two right here does some of that. Intent to have that discretion.
Because the only point of concern of chapter forty eight, section six is whether or not it is more detrimental.
Right, right. And granted, I suppose that's the same consideration you're giving to any special permit.
Right, to those sixteen pieces or whatever it is that are there. Outlined, right?
To that end. I'm a fast forwarding a little bit into all this. I. Any action, if we choose to pose this, then I just want to make sure that we. And again, as is customary, we leave the door open to any final edits from town council where they're supposed to tap you.
Okay.
If we choose to dissent. So anyways, that's that part right there. I don't think attorney Hurley's. Comment. He did, yes, she did. So that she was making reference to the section here. A, but hers is. Making reference to where the protected use A D U's are allowed. Which to another degree. Tells us that perhaps the term local A D U is. It's not communicating the intent.
To them.
Right off the bat. I think it's defensible in the end, if if we're just able to the way it is, it's written in there and someone just has to go in and look at the definition of a local A D U. Understand that is, let's go take a look at that. Local and protected use A D U's are both defined. I'm sorry, here we are. Locally to you. In this case, not a protected use A D U. But includes the rules specific to the nonprotected circumstances. Locally, do you shall require either a special permit? Under forty eight, section six, waste site plan approval or special permission. Yes, so that's, that's the other half of attorney David's comment that I really wanted. Line it to make sure he's a hundred percent comfortable.
Okay.
I haven't seen that much. It wasn't flagged by. Attorney her, so perhaps everything's just fine.
She's just very sensitive to make sure that everybody understands that the protected use A D U's are not allowed.
That's it. Don't, don't mess with it, right? So if you'll allow me now to just take a quick walk to that suggested language edit. From that first comment. Second comment. Okay, off street parking. We, we had it simple before, just saying, well, we'll give her the ad is about one off street parking space provided for all local A D U's and protected use A D U's. Can be in a driveway or garage. So if the planning board is so inclined to describe a circumstance where more than one parking space may be permitted, I added the following sentence. An additional parking space may be allowed through the planning board review and or group will process as applicable to the proposal. Only when adequate justification is made in adequate space for parking, vehicular maneuvering and landscape buffering is provided without compromise to pedestrian movement. Landscape buffering may be a bridge too far. And I do observe, oh my goodness, what is going on here? Click away.
Just don't hit.
I want to, yes, exactly. I think the adequate justification is made. I, I want to make sure that's the applicant. We're not trying to create a with planning board as opposed to writing justification to the decision. So anyways, that may be.
I mean, I kind of get held up on. What isn't an adequate justification for a second parking space, I mean. The A D U is going to be meant to serve my son and daughter-in-law and they have two cars. Is that adequate justification enough for? Us or anybody else?
Right, so I guess what, what circumstance would? Aside from dimension, not being able to fit in there, is there any circumstance where we would say that's really only suitable for you only need one parking space, perhaps?
I am right. I mean, I, I want to acknowledge that. The motivation might be there to try to limit the amount of impervious surfaces. Throughout town. But I think in the case of a A D U, we're not talking about an acre's worth of pavement. And if that were the case, that they came in with an extensive amount of payment, that would be a reasonable site plan modification. Regardless of whether they were doing it because they want to. I don't know, put a new basketball court next to the A D U, you know, I, you know, that would be something that we would manage outside of is it a parking space? Is it not a parking space? Is it a parking space for a boat? Is it a parking space for a motorcycle or? So. You did good work with that language. I don't know that we need it.
I'm about, I'm trying to reject the insertions. Is there any need or desire? To. Put a cap? It'd be, it's hard to envision what someone might be building. Right? So maybe I just, I just asked the question, that's all.
No, I think that's going to need to be managed under reasonable site plan review. Really strange to try to call out the in extreme circumstance and then that's.
It's hard to imagine and protect against something fabulous.
Right.
Or embrace it for that matter.
Alright. Um, I think we can accept the removal of the at least one. We still need final approval. And understanding regarding the special permit. Language. And I would rather hear his response at our next meeting and be able to act on it. So I would entertain a motion to continue as opposed to closing this, this evening.
When we get to that.
When we get to that.
Then that's perfectly fine by me. I want to leave the option available to the planning board.
I just want to make sure all of our, so I agree, right? And I think perhaps, John, if you can email this in its current form. To everybody so that we all can have a chance to really read through it. Another time or two prior to our next meeting. When we have our answer, we will all be comfortable. Voting on it and making our recommendation to town meeting at that time. Does that sound good for everybody?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep.
Right, um, public hearing. Does anybody in the audience have a comment? On the A D U by law, no? This is so much fun for you. Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns from board members? Alright, then I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on proposed accessory dwelling unit by law to.
Seven eleven.
Sure, to seven eleven. P M on April twenty nine.
Dave's been a so moved.
Take a second or second.
Call vote Jessica Thornton, I.
Dave's been a high.
Take a singer, I.
Diane just by. Thank you for that work, Mr. God.
No problem. People Square Condominee Community. Alright. As planning board members may recall. Through last fall and into the early winter. We processed a a security reduction for stormwater infrastructure. So under the previous stormwater by law, security was put into place. Through a cash deposit. Most recently, or at that time was about a hundred seventy five thousand dollars. And the project was and remains substantially complete, if not something more than that. Uh there were some concerns about one basin out there, and there were some minor uh repairs. Uh requested to. I believe a a drain manhole cover. Uh so those concerns and the repairs uh were. Essentially left as open items secured through twenty thousand dollars, put into escrow uh via attorney. Uh Richard Seipack. Um so that's the current security that is in place for that project um. The work was completed, uh we started getting some rains and everything seemed to function, but uh. Both uh DPW. And the homeowners position wanted to just make sure we had enough uh. I guess time to see amongst variable storm events that the repaired basin was functioning properly. I have three. Those correspondence I'd like to share and I guess I'll read them into the record. Those must I said this tonight, alright, uh the first letter is from our Leveque Associates. Jointly issued by Rob Leveque and Philippe Brable. This is written to uh Randy Brown uh in his capacity to advise the planning board. On this technical matter. Dear Mr. Brown, on behalf of Twenty Depot Square LLC, our Leveque Associates is pleased to submit this letter to document the general compliance of the ASBIL stormwater management system for the site improvements. At the depot square condominium development, our LA has been involved in limited observation review of the construction. Of the depot square condominium community located off Depot Street in South Vic, Massachusetts over the past fifteen years. Our involvement has included periodic site visits, site inspections, and coordination with a proponent and municipal officials throughout the life of the project. This assessment is based primarily. On the aforementioned site visits, field surveyed, as-built conditions of the development, and post-construction onsite walkthroughs. Based on our observations over the duration of the project, as well as more recent stormwater inspections conducted in connection with the project close-up, we note the following. The stormwater conveyance system, including pipes, manhole structures, catch basins, and water quality units. Uh was found to be in disrepair during certain inspections, these deficiencies were identified and repaired by the. As of our most recent inspection, stormwater conveyance components have been installed in general conformance with the approved design plans. These improvements are shown on the ASBIL plan submitted with this request. Each of the stormwater basins has been reviewed, observed, and rebuilt or repaired as needed over the course of the project. In particular, basin number five was a subject of increased focus in recent years. Modifications intended to resolve issues in basin number five initially resulted in slower than intended drainage. To remedy this, the proponent retained a contractor to regrade the basin and install new filter media. Following this work, the basin has been monitored after rain events and appears to be functioning as intended. Based on the foregoing, our Leveque Associates Inc. respectfully requests final sign-off from the South Vic Planning Board. Regarding stormwater permit issue for the above referenced project. Stormwater system has been installed in general conformance with the approved design plans, recognizing previously documented deviations. And other changes that have been reviewed with the DPW slash engineering department and planning board over the duration of the project build-out. It is important to note. That due to characteristics. Of the site and associated stormwater infrastructure, ongoing periodic maintenance is critical for the long-term function of the system. This maintenance is required under the approved operation and maintenance plan, and is a responsibility of the homeowners association. Going forward, as imperative of the homeowners association, engage qualified professionals to inspect and maintain the stormwater management in conveying systems in accordance with the ONM plan. To prevent future degradation or potential downstream impacts. Please also note that our Leveque Associates Inc. by confirming the system's installation in general conformance with the plans. Is not assuming any responsibility for the long-term maintenance or monitoring of the stormwater system. These responsibilities remain with the homeowners association or their designated as outlined in the stormwater report and ONN plan. Do you have any questions or require additional documentation, please do not hesitate to contact our office sincerely. Our Leveque Associates, Rob Leveque and Philippe Brable. Along with that letter, they submitted a copy of the ASBIL plans that were issued um. Multiple times, but most recently uh amended uh last fall. So okay, well, this was uh to bring that discussion uh back to the planning board. Um as attorney Seipack noted, um but he was for the planning board last year um. We were looking for acknowledgement from three parties. We needed the design uh engineer to. Give some certification to the best of their abilities um to what was built out there, uh the next piece uh was uh for DPW. Um to. Share any concerns they may have. Randy Brown writes to me, John, this email summarizes the outcome of repairs performed in November two two thousand twenty-four to detention basin five at depot square by. Tim Lucier and his contractor. Prior to these repairs, the basin was observed to be infiltrating stormwater at a much slower rate than anticipated. Since the completion of the pair of work. Uh DPW has conducted several inspections after rain events. These inspections have confirmed that basin, that the basin is draining fully within seventy-two hours of each storm event. Which aligns with the expected performance for the facility. Based on these findings, DPW has determined that detention basin five is functioning properly. As a result, DPW recommends the release of any security tied to this basin back to Mr. Lucier. If you have any questions, let me know, Randall Brown. Uh the third piece um was acknowledgement um through homeowners association. Um and Mike Parent has been the point of contact for that. There was some discussion about uh how to bring this back back forward, and I remind everybody, one, make sure we, that's an exchange from uh parties. Mister Parent writes to attorney Seipack. Mister Parent is out of state, but connected with attorney Seipack today as reported to me um. Hi, Rich Seipack. Mister Parent writes, hi, Rich, our expertise comes from Randy Brown, Randy is happy, we are delighted. Randy also wants Rob to sign off on it, and the people who know more than me are willing to sign up on the pond, working to the expected level, we are good, thanks, Rich. My guarantee. So, those are the three key pieces there, sorry for the duration of that discussion, but I think we want to make sure we had those three pieces in mind. With that, um I would recommend. A motion that simply releases the security, you know, the planning board, no more than DPW can take ownership. Um of the completed work out there, so we're not um. Certifying um any performance out there, we are simply releasing uh the remainder of funds.
And how is it currently held?
It's currently held in escrow, uh there's an account, um an escrow account that is being managed through attorney Seipack's. Office in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Do board members have any questions?
I think we're all signing off. Only due to the fact that involved parties are okay with it. We're not saying it's okay, but they're saying it's okay to us, correct?
Right, right, and we wouldn't. Say it's not okay unless. Randy said to us. You might want to hold back on this, but.
I was long overdue to get rid of this project.
Agreed. But I'm also glad to see the South Vic Planning Board holding on to funds until we are certain. That a project is completed and to the standards that it was approved to be built for. Alright. Then with all that, I would entertain a motion to release the twenty thousand being kept in escrow by attorney Rich Seipack. For the stormwater infrastructure security.
Dave's been a so moved.
They cut through a second.
We'll call a vote, Jessica Thor and I.
They got singer, I.
Diane just by.
So attorney Seipack uh has advised us to use a generic um release document uh once um. If anything, things happen with the content and format of that, of assessment or um signature and to be notarized. I think we're fine with one on that, but we'll look for him to confirm.
Okay.
Okay, nothing to sign this evening, but uh we'll get that managed quickly.
Do we want to vote to authorize me to sign? Do I hear a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter to attorney Seipack? Once it is approved by council.
Dave's been a so moved.
Take a second.
We'll call vote Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been high.
Diane just by.
Thank you.
Does all that paperwork stay in file with this whole project?
Yes, so uh there is a. Uh there are a number of accordion folders. Just to this project um through uh Alan um. And Marcus's and now my uh my tenure. Um so all these steps are. Monumented there and at least um recent ones are kept in our. Town archives.
Oh, is this project?
That's two, so I started at Leveque Associates in two thousand eight or nine. Um and that was one of the first, that was the first job I worked on. So I think that went in for permitting in two thousand nine.
So you're the beginning and the end, huh?
Wow, that is uh, that's something.
Alright. Next, noble steed crossing. Review and revaluation of the subdivision infrastructure security. Do you remember? Let's start with that.
Jesse Saltmarsh Noble State um. I'll receive the uh updated plans. That were revised per um Randy Brown's comments, and I emailed those out today. To John and Randy and uh Sabrina. And um. We're currently working on water quality basin number three, um re- reworking that area. Um we're gonna be doing the test pits for the footing. Um for uh. For the crossing tomorrow with um. Pierre from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Alcum, that'll be at nine thirty. Um Randy and John are both aware of it, I'm not. Want somebody from DPW or the planning board will be there, or I mean John, not you guys, but. Um and so that'll be done uh tomorrow. And um we're gonna continue uh working on. Towards our schedule that we proposed to you.
Um are we still in line for the April submission?
Yeah, twenty first, yeah, yeah.
Updates, John, from your end?
No, uh we appreciate uh Jesse taking the time to meet um. Uh with the team over at DPW, uh I did see that uh correspondence come through, that's forwarded uh from uh the design engineer. Um so. Between that and the test. The tests uh for the structural component uh taking place uh tomorrow, glad to see that moving forward as uh intended.
Any board member questions? Alright, well.
Okay, so I'll just come back on the next meeting.
Come back at the next meeting.
That's the twenty ninth.
It's the twenty ninth, yeah, we have the school vacation.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Alright, we'll see you then, Jesse. Review of plans not requiring approval, four and six second drive.
I apologize, I don't have this electronic computer.
I'll survive.
Oh, uh.
Maybe we'll pull it up on GIS.
Yeah, that's something, nobody do it. I say okay, it's not quite ready yet. Okay, so James and Elaine Cosmasus, Cosmesus uh own a substantially sized uh piece of property off of Fenton Drive. The tail, as it's told to me. Uh relates to what called the irregularity you see. In that westerly property line, uh where if you will, their property, actually, it's supposed, it's a tale of survey, right, uh a lot of times. When you're talking about uh country surveys, uh the first one to record a plan. Gets a better chance of getting what they want out of it. That's not, that's probably a tremendously risky statement, but the bottom line is, uh it does relate to the fact that, you know, um. Land that is only described. In terms of a destination and turning and going to another destination and returning, as opposed to bearings and distances and a recorded plan. Without the recorded plan, you're not as well protected, um so. That has been a goal of theirs uh for some time, but as it turns out. Were um. Near their access point, um and with number four here, we can just see the signature of the driveway that. Um goes off their property to a little bit, so what we have in the Antarctic is a um is a land swap. Alright, so that if you will. That vertex right there um can be, can add on in this convention right there. The goal is to not take um. A uh a non-conforming property and make it more non-conforming. So the proposal is to frankly, whatever they cut out to bring. The driveway fully then onto the land of the Cosmesuses, they add on. Um to another portion of the property, not affecting any um setbacks uh or creating any other non-conformities. Um so not not unfamiliar uh tool, but uh we don't often see large. Um surveys like this comes through, so there's definitely a reason and a need behind it. But in terms of what the planning board reviews.
So we're, so we're literally swapping that one.
Yeah, so this driveway will become fully uh missing, meaning the big property.
Yeah, so where are they gonna?
So we'll do property, mine will be this. And then this little triangle is going to become part of this.
It'll be over there, okay. So the best way to describe it to you is that.
I can see it, I can see it.
They're cutting off what is essentially a triangle there. Giving them the same size piece of the triangle. On the backside of the property, it's within the triangle, it's about a thousand or about twelve hundred square feet total being swapped.
It's pretty simple, yeah, it's pretty cut and dry.
When you can't see it in front of you, it's like.
I can see it.
Alright, then. Uh with no other questions from board members, I will hear a motion to endorse. The A and R land swap. As provided on the plan. Given to us.
Dave's been a so moved.
They cut through a second.
We'll call a vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been high.
They got singer, I.
I am just by.
Thank you all so much, uh for those here in the room, please remember to sign. Before you leave this meeting.
Do we have um receipt? From one fifty-seven feeding house?
Oh, yeah, we gotta talk about that too. Um let me read. I've probably already. You know how much I like reading, is the right? I think I've already done this one.
You're very good at it.
Oh, gosh, so. Um. On March seventeenth. Steve Salvini from Salvini Associates, uh. Wrote to the planning board. Uh, on behalf of Crepe's Tea House, we're requesting a pause in the scheduling of the special permit application currently submitted until after June first, two thousand twenty five. With this pause, we're hopeful more members that will be at the planning board to facilitate the various needs of the public, thank you for your consideration in this matter, Steve Salvini. Um. That's one half of the necessary equation to extend the period of time before opening a public hearing. Once an application's been sustained in by the town clerk, the other half would be of the planning board to acknowledge that and let's go ahead and set a date. We can go the full distance or we can pick a different date.
Um. Okay. So. This, I would normally say, sure, let's go ahead and. You know, acknowledge it and move it forward to with the first June. Meeting is June twenty fourth. Unless I'm.
I'm bringing it up right now, go ahead.
Pretty certain that that's, we, we have a meeting on May twenty seventh and then. We move into our summer schedule of one meeting a month for June, July and August. I would be okay with that, except for the fact that as of right now. Even post-election. We will still only have four board members, including. A board member that will need to recuse themselves. From the matter. And as far as I am aware, there is not another. Name floating out there, um, we received a letter of interest. From a member of our current housing authority. And in making sure that there wasn't going to be a conflict in scheduling and in the interim, he's actually become. The Republican caucuses nominee. For Mr. Doherty's. Seat that was gonna be open, so whether we were to, um, appoint that gentleman. Prior to the election or wait until his swearing in the week after the election. Um, Mr. Utzinger's, um. Withdrawal from the board will then go into effect. Um, so we will still only have three members eligible to vote on this particular project. I would ask. John, what your thoughts are, do we? Set a date? And then push it off from that date if we are not. Available to do so at that time, or is it better to just acknowledge the receipt of it and? Leave it open-ended, I, I'm not sure how to manage that. As we juggle these.
You're asking a good question, so.
Jess, I will stay on for a period of time if you need me.
And through a contentious public hearing process on, uh. What you already know is going to be a hot button issue that may last through the summer.
Okay.
Okay. I, I don't want to presume your availability. Out of respect for you and respect for the applicant. You know, and, and understanding what this application is and the amount of time. That will probably be needed to dedicate. To such a public hearing that it is not going to be a one and done. Or even probably a two and done type situation where there's gonna be a lot of public input. Um. I don't wanna tell you, no, you can't stick on and stay with us, but I also just wanna be realistic. And respectful of you and your needs and desire.
Yep.
To move on, so.
It's your call, it's your call.
Thanks.
How about this, I mean, I appreciate Dick's generosity.
Yes.
Um. But, and I guess to see a little of, um, Steve's language, there's a municipal function that needs to be tended to. Not just our business, but if you will. Beating. Uh, members to the board, so let's. I'll tell you what I need first, perhaps I'll generate some other, uh, language or thought, um. The extension does need to be monumented, uh, by both the applicant, uh, and the planning board, so. I think I'm more comfortable if we assign the date tonight, if. The applicant remains willing to do so, or if there's a need for it, right, um, then we can revisit this as we get closer to presumably June twenty fourth. But, um. That was as long as I say after June first, yes, after June first, so why don't we, uh, set the date this evening?
Alright, so. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the receipt? Of the request to extend the time before opening the public hearing for Crepe's Tea House, one fifty seven.
Go ahead, just don't say the date yet.
And one fifty seven Feeding Hills Road. To. A time that will be. Announced at the June twenty fourth meeting?
I think we could, I didn't wanna just say, oh, June twenty fourth, I wanna give a little bit of, we're, two twenty fifth would be satisfactory to me. Totally have a chance to talk about it in case there's. An appointed, I apologize, I'm stepping on.
What a beautifully executed motion.
Is anyone gonna second that before the discussion?
Do you wanna change the date or the time? Or is that one in the safe for what you're talking about right now?
They say, uh, appointing after June first, maybe three. I don't want the promise intended from this motion to make it sound like. Opening at June twenty fourth. That may very well be the case.
Okay.
Um, and that's fine if. Everything, if, if either we have to go that way or what have you, but.
So. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the request to extend the time before opening the public hearing for Crepe's Tea House, one fifty seven Feeding Hills Road? To a time on or after June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five?
Dave's been so moved.
Take a second.
Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been high.
Take a second, right?
Yeah, yeah. Excellent.
Thank you for coming.
It's gonna be entertaining when they read them that back, yeah.
Yeah. What do you see the minutes?
Alright. Next. We have. Planning board members and staff members comments.
Why don't I jump in with the staff comments?
Sure.
Uh, your luxurious, uh, chair was kind to point out, uh, the, um, approved January twenty first minutes did not reflect the. Approval of other minutes at that meeting, so that has been added into the copy before you.
Oh. So really quick, it just reads the many minutes approval for September tenth and twenty fourth. And October seventh of twenty twenty four, all the motions were made by Mr. Spina and seconded by Mr. Utzinger. For all three meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion? To approve. The meeting minutes for January twenty first as amended.
Dave's been so moved.
Take a second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been high.
Take a second, right?
Diane, just by I.
Thank you. I also went kinda crazy and made a bunch of changes. To the February four meeting minutes that were emailed to you. And the February twenty fifth. Meeting minutes.
Thank you, nothing too wild.
Nothing too wild, they were just. Grammar, grammar changing of the ways that some of the things were listed, um. And just clarification on the language to make sure the. Meaning was conveyed properly.
Yes, yep, I would say both for Mr. Aggleston's, um. Modification request and then, uh, later for. I'm sorry. Pioneer Trading Companies Application, some, uh, point changes. But nothing that, I think is.
Change the meaning and or intent of the data.
Yep.
When you're satisfied with those, I would hear a motion to approve the. Meeting minutes for February four. Twenty twenty five.
He's been assembled.
Take a second.
Call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
He's been high.
Take a second, right?
Diane, just by I.
Similarly. Will I hear a motion for the meeting minutes for February twenty fifth, twenty twenty? Has amended.
Dave's been so moved.
Take a second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been high.
Take a second, right?
Diane, just by I.
I'm sorry, I didn't give, um, any other planning board members the chance to comment.
Ah, yeah, that's definitely. So the Master Plan Implementation Committee met. Honestly, March twenty sixth, but similar to the end of March, um. Still chasing down various boards for prioritization of action items. Apparently, we are not. Hello, board. Completely compliant. So, uh, I encourage anybody who hasn't done, they should, everybody should have done three things.
And, and who was the, who was the MPIC member assigned to the planning board to make sure we did our job?
Yeah, he's been woefully liquid. I think we all should have done three things, which would be ranking of our top priorities. Ranking of the bottom priorities and the last thing we'll submit is let, ranking of the middle priorities. I can get, I know that we, I know that we're not compliant, but I will, uh, I will go through and I can find out specifically.
Who is missing?
Missing what and, uh.
I think I've missed my middle.
Yeah.
I, I emailed, um, the document, the middle, after our last meeting, when I realized that I completely missed that.
I, it's just the document is, it driving me insane, quite honestly. It's all over the place, I'm trying to format it so I can print it and read it and follow it.
You need a page break preview.
I, I.
Diagnostic.
Uh, PD update would be.
Oh, that would be great, can you do that?
Thank you for volunteering.
Because, yeah, it's been driving me crazy.
Cool, alright.
Have to look at it.
And then we're meeting again at the end of April.
Diane, anything? Dick, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, um. I had something, I went to pull up. Something on our E code. As a member of the. Community reached out to me and had a question, and I went to answer it and, uh. Our E code does not have all of our updated bylaws. Such as our pre-existing non-conforming and or updated cannabis bylaw.
Probably a couple more.
Probably a few more, um. Who do we, uh, submit a ticket to, or how do we go about getting that updated?
I vote for John.
Thanks, Dick, uh.
I almost spit out my water.
I oftentimes wonder. Why municipal products, um. Are. Archaic. Um, or seem to have clumsy execution, whether it's. The website package that sold to towns, the assessors mapping products that are sold, um, or the. Bylaw repositories online, um, here's the truth, the good news is that. Um, with Chris D. Myet's, uh, arrival, when we went back to grab any loose ends or whatever else. And submitted everything to E code, right, uh, the new bylaws live. In a place that is not very well described, but there's a little button on the left-hand side, says new laws, there's twenty four of them. Going back to two thousand twenty three. So two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four actions live. In that one space over there. And for an individual trying to seek and work with the bylaws of Southwick, oh, you'll, you go where you click on this. Uh, previous non-conforming, not one eighty five, twenty eighth section, uh, look at that, I can work right here, right? And now the truth is that that had been superseded. Through official actions that you either know about or you discover by following. Base person to them, as a dangerous consultant, that's something I've done. Uh, but anyway, so the goodness is that they're under where? I don't, but there is also something else that I think is, I play here, and that the town ponies up for. An update to the bylaw.
So we have to ask, um.
I think it's.
For money, did he say?
It's something like that. That's a long way to answer.
Forget what I even said, I'll chisel it onto tablets myself, um.
I will, why don't I get an answer, Christie, in terms of where we are in the process, when we expect these updates to be.
Or even like an asterisk saying, this by, this piece of the bylaw has been updated by here, click here.
Special town meeting.
Alright, cool, you learned something, you're.
I will make an action item.
Alright. Do I hear a motion to close the meeting?
Dave's been so moved.
Take a second.
Alright, everybody in agreement, say hi.
Hi.